Public hearing of, hello? Can I have everybody's attention? Thank you. I'd like to call the town council public hearing of April 29th, 2024 to order. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. And can we have roll call, please?
Counselor Saccala absent. Counselor Crissati.
Here.
Counselor Finger is absent. Counselor Hendrickson.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Santinella.
Here.
And Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Nine members are present, two are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. And then the number two, the proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. And we will start out with our presentation of the town manager's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, residents and guests, and also our Board of Education Chairwoman, Charlotte, and the Assistant Manager, Andrew. Welcome. We did this a couple of weeks ago, and I was actually happy with it. I didn't have remorse. Usually I do a presentation and go, I wish I'd said that, or I wish I had said this. I thought it went pretty well, so my voice is, I was losing it over the weekend. So we're going to play that presentation first, and then Charlotte will give hers. So I hope it answers most all the questions you have regarding the combined town and Board of Education budget for FY '25. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, residents here and at home. Welcome to our proposed fiscal year 2025 budget presentation. And this is how we've done it. At the very last slide, we'll give you what remains of the process going forward. But this is the opportunity for me to present to you our budget in combination with the Board of Ed and the programs that we will be supporting and the CIP projects that we hope to accomplish in the next year. Obviously, then it's a handoff to you, and then we'll get into budget deliberations with the council to look into it more closely at your leisure over about four different nights, starting this week and next week, and the following, leading up to the public hearing on April 29th. So I like to say, you know, knowing where we've been helps determine where we're going. A budget is kind of a blueprint. It's just more the numbers that we balance. I mean, unlike the federal government, where they can propose and be in deficit and spending, we can't. We have to balance it, so we have to bring in enough revenue to pay for what we're going to pay out. And that's exactly what we are required to do, and we've done it. But I still like to look at some of the projects over the last year, just to let the folks at home know what investments the council has made and what we're looking forward to in the future to help with the grand list. And if we expand the grand list in regard to commercial industrial properties, it lessens the burden on our homeowners and the residences. So that's our goal ultimately. So, John, the old cow's tail. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be right if John wasn't here. Because I have to say, next slide, and John has to help do it, John. Are you ready, Maestro?
Sure.
Next slide, please. All right. And as I just indicated, this would be just a few of the projects and progress that you as a council made in the last year or two. So in the upper left-hand corner is Higgins Park, and anybody who came in here tonight and visits can see the improvements that you authorized just a few, couple of short months ago, already being implemented, which are going to help us with some of the other slides. The upper right, you can see what we already have, the playscape and basketball, which are, as you came in this evening, now that spring is here, being heavily used by our residents. The bottom right, the Enfield Summer Concert Series. We have a full roster, 13 different evenings, three different jazz on Sundays, in conjunction with our farmer's market in June, July, and August. And they are currently going to be hooking up the electrical, so that we will not have to have a loud generator this summer. So we're looking forward to that. And again, you can just see the ban shell in the bottom center, which is beautiful, and to the left, part of the onset of the construction, which is ongoing as we speak. Next, John. Also, I think it's important to note the council's commitment to Powder Hollow. We did make some adjustments, but I think it's good. The council came together and worked collaboratively for improvements there, which we've been looking for for the last couple of years. And on the right, the high school drainage. We did come forward with a program and a package that was much, much less than the millions of dollars we thought it would cost to fix the drainage, and that's going to be implemented as we speak. And also tonight, I'm happy to report, as part of that presentation, SLR had done a field study. They've made their report out to the Public Works Subcommittee, who referred it back to the full council. We'll be hearing from them as special guests tonight, and we'll be awaiting next steps that the council wants to take in regard to all of our sports usages and facilities in town. Next, John? Just a couple or three. As we know, Raising Kane have been one of the additions of some good restaurants in town on the right. Race Stedward, our Chief Building Inspector, says that he's approved the preliminary plans, and L.L. Bean is on track to open in the fall. And I'm happy about our collaborative relationship with Capital Workforce Partners. I transitioned from when Bob was mayor to when Ken was mayor. We've already had them in, giving the program of manufacturing at his nuntuck. That's also going to work into, we're hoping to partner with them in September for a job fair in conjunction with a business breakfast, which we did a couple of years ago, where we had hundreds of Enfield businesses come, and the governor was the keynote speaker. I have that on the planning books right now. We hope to do that in the same day, bring all the businesses in the morning, and then have the job fair with some of those same businesses in the afternoon. Next. And again, the train station. As I reported, we received, we bumped into the Commissioner of Transportation, Mr. U. Colito, a couple of weeks ago. I asked about the progress. They had sent us then, and I disseminated to the council, the schedule, the deadlines and the benchmarks for the train station down in Thompsonville were on track. All of the deadlines are being met. They hope to have final approvals in the fall and then commence construction at the beginning of '25. So that's very exciting. Next, John? This is just sort of an overview of the station. Pulls back a little. We're going to have the intermodal transport with buses. And the reason I mention this, I can't talk too much about it, but if you look across the top of the screen, you can see the generator plant that Eversource property has. We've worked for a number of years with Eversource to look at the remediation, to see about acquiring that. We used to have the casket building. It's the empty space there. But we have a lot of flexibility for parking. As you can see on this side of it with Main Street, one of the principal reasons DOT and the state were so interested with our site. But I can just tell you, we've met with the Levitts and some potential developers on that greenway across on the river. Very exciting plans. They have signed a purchase and sale agreement with local Connecticut developers. Can't say much more, but I think it's going to be, again, a real boon to Thompsonville and to Enfield. And again, their interest was, are you going to have magic carpet? Are you going to have other transportation to the square, to other businesses in town? And we are. And a couple of weeks ago, we received, it was the half million dollar micro transit grant, which the governor came for East Windsor and Enfield, and that's going to be part of this, too. So all of these pieces of the puzzle are coming together. And it can be frustrating because it can take years, but we're really at a crossroads, where a lot of it is really starting to happen. And it's going to really put Enfield, when I put the star on the top and say we're the gateway to Connecticut, everyone will know it pretty soon. Next. And that's the final slide in regard to redevelopment. We are still in talks, and I reported this evening, on parts of it. And we're continuing to focus very, very laser-like on the square redevelopment and their proposal. And you're going to hear a lot more about that in the coming weeks. John? As you know, fund balance. We need to know, what do we have in the kitty? What's our rainy day fund? By our rules, we have to have 9% of the operating budget, which equates to, we should have $15 million on hand at all times for any emergencies or contingencies. In Enfield, due to the stewardship of this council and their fiscal responsibility over the years, that projected fund balance at the end of '24 will be $25 million. And even though we have commitment to it for CIP and whatnot, that usually does come back to us, and it could hit and peak again at about $30 million. But we know with John, John is always very circumspect and conservative in his valuations, but we will have $25 million at the end of fiscal '24. Next. All right. Well, this is now getting into the nitty-gritty. And what this slide shows us in the bottom, I'll start at the bottom, is what the town budget will be this year, proposed by me. So how do we get there? So this is the revenues and the revenue sources that will pay for it. So property taxes of the lion's share, 61%, or $95 million. Motor vehicle taxes, we're familiar with, $22 million. Intergovernmental revenues, that's state and federal, but mostly ECS and those type of grants, the amount of $33 million. Charges for services, these are charges such as out of the town clerk's office, recording fees and the like, in the amount of about $1,005,000. Then from our investment rental income and other incomes, which are smaller, about $1,008,000. Fines and forfeitures, a smaller amount, but that's through blight and other areas where we collect, $9,000. Licenses and permits primarily come from the building department in the amount of $1.2 million, and that gives us the 100% total for this year's townside budget of $155,763,604. And simply the pie chart on the right, since we started off with that with the departments a couple of months ago, you can see how that breaks down. All right. This is basically the state revenues and what I alluded to before, intergovernmental. If you look at pilot, that's for money we receive in lieu of taxes for the prison and for the Department of Motor Vehicles in town. It's $1.3 million. We used to have a formula that gave us something for his nuntuck, but that's been reworked by the state, so it's currently zero. The LoSIP is for our 2021 roads program, and that's an amount of $308,000 plus this year. Now, the next couple, town aid road grant and grants for municipal projects, one at about $500,000, one at $250,000. That basically is money we receive in from the state for road repair, maintenance, snow removal, signage, and things like that. And then we get our share of the Mashin, Tucket, Pequot, and Mohegan Grant of $1.2 million. And then the ECS, the education cost sharing, about $29,000. So that's the total in from state for this year's budget, which we anticipated about $33.5 million. Next. All right. And this is, this is the breakdown across the board. So what we did is, we wanted to make it simple. We put what last year was and what this year is. So Board of Ed, last year was $75,900, just about $76 million. Proposed this year, $82 million. So the value change and increase, and on the right, I hate to jump around, but it's $6.5 million increase or 8.6%. And we knew that, and I've talked to the superintendent about it. You drop down to the next. The town's proposed 2025 budget is $78.2 million approximately. Last year was $77, almost five. So the value change is under $1 million on the town side of $827,549, or my proposed budget is an increase of just about 1%. Now, what we wanted to show was the next line, because this was something that we obviously didn't create, but we have agreed to fund, which is the school security officer program, and that's $1 million. And the percent change is 100%, because we're going to fund it completely. So when you add together, the bottom left, the proposed budget combined for the Board of Ed and the town is $161 million. Value change is $8.4 million increase, or when you blend the two, 5.4% increase over last year. Now, I've been asked, and this, this slide comes from a form that we, through finance, provide to the Board of Education every year, which they then provide to the state, which determines various, you know, the grants and monies that we receive. So it lists every department, and I needn't go through it. You can see we do IT with the crossing guards. Last year, the police department, that was for our roving patrol for the elementary schools. And also school security, not including the new SSO program. And then HR does amount, you can see the different amounts that we do. And that, this has been within the range. John checked the last couple of years. This was '23. Looks to be in line. And then down the bottom, you can see the debt service for JFK and Enfield High School of $3.2 million. So the total is $15,382,000. And that will be reflected in the total division between town and board in a later slide. But I think it's, it's transparent for us to know, in addition to the direct request from the board, these are also in-kind services that we provide in addition thereto. Next, John? So we look at the mil rate. I went back to 22 to show what it was at 34. Then you see this looks like a precipitous drop in '23 in the mil rate, and that's because that's when revaluation occurred. Then you can see it went up over the next two years. Last year, the mil rate was 29.21. This year, the proposed mil rate will be 32.23, which is an overall increase of 1.6%. And that is for the combined taxes needed, we need to generate for the Board of Ed and the town, for our total budget. And how it works for folks at home, the mil rate, that's 32.23 for every $1,000 of taxable income on your home. We look at your home's value, and we then take 70% of it, not the full 100%, multiply it by the mil rate to get what your average cost would be to a homeowner. So we've always used a home of a value of $200,000. So the property taxes based upon this new mil rate would be about $4,500. Of course, if you have a $400,000 house, it would be double that. Next slide. I think people like to know where their tax dollars go. Again, this is based on if you have a $200,000 household paying that $4,500 in taxes, we break it down just in descending order. And as I alluded to before, if you take the general fund plus the in-kind services for Enfield Public Schools, $2,700 of your taxes goes to that support, and it is 61% of our total budget, once you allow for the in-kind. And then it goes to public works, public safety, transfers, debt service, pensions and benefits of employees at 3%, general government, which is wages, at 3%, capital, which we're going to talk about, our capital projects, and then some miscellaneous other for the total of $4,500. Water pollution control. Water pollution control is always a dicey subject, because a few years back, based upon our consultant's recommendation and requirements of DEP, when we were going to refurbish at a cost of about $40 million, the Water Pollution Control Center, was told us that we had to break away and divide water pollution control from the town budget. So with so doing, if you looked at that other chart earlier, which said police, fire, all of those breakdowns, water pollution control was contained therein. But now we've broken it out, and now people get a separate bill for it. So whereas before, the increases probably were about the same, that people didn't look at that bill and say, oh, my goodness, look what I'm paying for water pollution control. And we're going to have a discussion, not for tonight, but rest assured, before we adopt the rate, there's been a request in the past to do away with the base, the quarterly base charge, and base it purely on volumetric. And therefore, someone goes away in the winter or doesn't use much water, they don't pay as much. And I'll address that at the right time. But we'll look at those numbers. Short of that, in FY 2024, the cost of running water pollution control was $9.5 million. This year, it's $9.9, and I'll tell you what those drivers were, but that's about a $351,000 increase. How do we pay for it? All right. The budget for water pollution control is about, as I said in the previous page, $9.9 million. There are certain offsets and monies that we receive, like collection, late charges, hookups. So the amount of money we need to collect this year in this budget for water pollution control is $8.6 million. And how we pay for that is two ways. One is the quarterly charge, which is remaining unchanged this year. It's $39 a quarter. That will generate 53% of the money we need, of that $8.6 million. The balance of it will be raised in volumetric usage charges. So you can see the two rates on the, below that. The top line, and you can see we're going from $3.60 a gallon to $4.61, and that's for usages under 20,000 gallons. Below that, if you use over 20,000 gallons, it goes from $5.39 last year to $6.90 this year. Those volumetric charges account for 47% of the money we need to raise. So base rate generates $2.7 million in the budget. Volumetric raises 5.9 currently. How do we determine these rates? We'll talk about it when we go to talk about the rates in a couple of weeks and set it. But we pretty much follow the methodology that was recommended to us by our consultants, Woodard and Kern, when they proposed this change and dividing out from the regular budget. Now, it's always the volumetric. You know, it goes up, and people see it. Some years, we didn't raise it, so some years we're behind. But these are the actual numbers, and we can address it when we go to set the rate. Next page, John? All right. So these are drivers in the budget, and we talked about some of them in February. And these are the increases that we have seen since last year. Employee benefits and health insurance primarily being the largest, in 14%, is $1.1 million increase. Contractual union increases to employees, $1.1. The new school security officer program, $1 million. Electricity costs have increased, as we said, by $361,000. And we're going to give a demonstration or proposal, I should say, Donald, in near future. We act as using less electricity. We've been good. We've reduced the amount we use, but as you all know, like at home, it's the delivery charges and other charges added onto the bill that continue to skyrocket. So even though, you know, we're modifying our conduct and reducing our use, the cost still is increasing. We list the, okay, disposal, $92,000. And that was a contract we waived the other day. There's one tonight on for the MDC in regard to these fees. But this is the increase in disposal costs for household waste, trash, bulky waste, and recyclables. And as you all know, we used to get paid a pretty dime for our recyclables, and now we pay an exorbitant amount to get rid of them. And maybe, I hope that switches again in the future. So the total increase is $10.207. And how are we paying for those increases? Because that number has to be the same. As I said, we have to balance the budget. So increase in investment income, we're fortunate. I guess as much as the bane of, you know, our current situation nationally is inflation's going up, well, so are interest rates. So we're going to see about approximately $800,000 in increased revenue, and it could be higher, but John's very conservative. Our education cost sharing grant has increased by $960,000. Use of fund balance has increased by $1 million. And I did that for the SSO program, because hopefully with our grand list next year and other things coming online, we'll have more time to offset it. But this year, we were very frugal. We only increased the townside budget under $1 million, but with this unanticipated cost of $1 million, and in talking to John, that's what the fund balance is for. Unforeseen, or this isn't quite an emergency, but it's a public safety priority, so I've recommended that usage. And you still see at the end of it, oh, we have a $25 million balance in the fund balance after we do this. The tax increases that we discussed previously would be $6.6 million, other, which are some smaller revenue increases of $800,000. So we balance that increased costs of $10 million, but revenue to account for it in about the same amount of $10 million. Next. All right. Capital improvement project. Capital improvement programs, and you have a sheet in front of you, which the Board of Ed provided for me today, in regard to modernization and upgrades of schools. I'm not saying anything we don't know. It's about $103 million. How we address it, there are different scenarios. We're not going to talk about it tonight. On the town side, we have about $120 million in capital improvements over the next 10 years for all of our buildings and our properties, sewers and pump stations. It's staggering, but we have to start to address it. We're going to be having a meeting with the Board of Ed this Wednesday night to discuss this budget, and hopeful from that meeting, we can start to talk about these other issues of the long-term modernization and upgrades of the schools and the town, because we're in this together, folks. So I'll go through it briefly. It's astounding to me, if you look at police cruisers, $750,000 for 10. When I used to sit here and we used to propose police cruisers, they were around $20,000, $24,000. So in, in the interest over the years of showing the true cost of a cruiser, we used to then separately do the radio and the cage and the lights and the MDT. Well, it's all together now, but because they keep on changing the body style on these vehicles, we can't use the cage. It doesn't fit. We can't use the light rack. It doesn't fit. There's no market to sell them. So that's the cost, the true value of putting one cruiser on the road, $75,000 times 10. The ambulance, $4.25. You can approve it. We'll sign it. We'll order it. It's going to take three years to get it. Okay? They had asked for two. I have another plan. We had money left over from the Macholuk Post. God bless those men and women. If we can find a used ambulance this year, we could then perhaps budget a small amount and get one online. We just got one back that has a new chassis, and we just sent one out for a new chassis. So we are trying to keep abreast of the needs of the EMS. The others are kind of mundane. There's nothing real super sweet or sexy in these CIPs. We've got, for safety reasons, to replace at Alcorn and Rotary, the rubber playground pads. Look at that cost. $450,000 just for the pads. When we say miscellaneous sport field upgrades, those are the same for a few of these categories. It's a fund we have every year, and that's for projects, repairs, and parts. What's new, Shaker Pines Steel, we've been approached by Mr. Russo and his group, and we know from, we just had gone down to the legislature, I'll touch upon this later, asking the state to convey us some land across from the Lego complex, about 14 acres, that would accommodate four fields and parking. But we have to take care of what we already have. And the existing fields, they need additional parking. There's drainage issues. We've had SLR go out and give us some proposals, but this $100,000 will allow us to increase the parking for them and also do some minor upgrades and improvements. We've been doing them around town, so I think this is the appropriate place in the budget to address that situation. We do sidewalk replacements around town. That's townwide. It's a small amount. We could spend, Mr. Noon says, 10 times that amount. Professional engineering services, this is the on-call contractors, architects, engineers, environmental. When you all have a proposal, what would it be, Chris, to convert next door and use it for one-stop shop? Well, we take those, that amount of money out. What about this at Nathan Hale, Chris? Or an environmental emergency where we need somebody to give us a design or an impact? We take the money from there. Gymnasium resurfacing, we're putting in for one school a year, $40,000. Miscellaneous school facilities, that's money they use for repairs, such as the boiler door that just came up. So we have some money to address these unexpected contingencies. Mandatory HVAC, that's a new state mandate that we have to do. It's $85,000. Crandall rear sidewalk, they've been trying to repair that with, you know, lipstick and bubble gum, and it's a, it's a risk. It's a safety issue, and I take that seriously, so we're going to replace it for $75,000. Again, miscellaneous town facilities, those are repairs and projects and parts for town hall and other town buildings. Boiler water treatment, that's a treatment we do before water goes into the boilers to try to extend their life expectancy. Rooftop electrical, imagine, $50,000, but at the annex, we have these troughs up on the roof that are completely degenerated, so the wires are exposed to the elements and the rain. So we have no choice. This is part of that, $120 million I told you about. And we're doing it in piecemeal, but we have to do it sometimes just to avoid a huge catastrophic cost if those wires were to spark, cause a fire, or go out. We have a lot of different programs in the annex now. Next, John? Kimberly Drive Drainage, $255,000. Freshwater Pond, I can't believe it, I was just sitting here when we did that five years ago. State mandate, got to dredge it again. Roads 21, and that's from LoSIP, some of it. This is a balance we talked about earlier for the roads projects. Storm sewer, pipe relining. Instead of replacing, we reline. It's less expensive, and it's been working, so this is another tranche of money to continue with that program. Fuel Master System hardware. What we need to do, we're going to be getting a new, a new tank out at the public works. So to upgrade the software, when people come in for the mechanics, and there's another cost down below, replay, automated information modules for 12. That's to go on the actual gas cap, so it can read it when you come home, and we know who's getting fuel and how much. So that's that program. Again, a dangerous walkway at the Central Library that's been going on for years. They've been trying to just fix it. We're going to now address it and replace it. And the rest are self-explanatory. A gym divider at the annex, basketball court backboards at the annex. These next three are all from EMS. Look at, folks. I'd love to say, and we're lobbying, I'm putting in another bond request for the public safety complex. We're just waiting on a letter or two, and we'll resubmit it. Get an opportunity to talk to the governor about it and lobby it. We'll see what happens. But we can't, we've waited. And to our point, pay-as-you-go or go to referendum. We can't wait years for something that might happen. Because what we've done is not put in the money to maintain what we have in the interim, and then it's far more expensive. So they absolutely have to have shore power. This keeps the ambulances. It's a connection to keep them in the winter months warm, so we can go on calls. A backup generator if they lose power. We have to keep those folks working. Bay door replacement and repairs of 60,000. Doors, you know, when you go on an emergency call, this life and death, and you hit the overdoor opener, you want the door to open. So we've got to do that. The rest, scrubbers and battery and chargers, that's more stuff in the weeds. Donald told me the details. But those are necessary. Let me just tell you the, I forget what the scrubbers are for. Oh, it's part of, for cleaning equipment at the schools. Seven blowers need to be replaced, be replaced out of 14. When I was here last time, I did seven. So I guess we're continuing with that replacement program so they can keep the walks safe during storms. I told you about the modules. This is the last section of crack seal programming that we're going to be doing on the roads that we needed to do for 61,000, and we're replacing the salt spreader. So the total for the CIP is 3.9 million. Next. Now likewise, we pay now separately, and we break out what the CIP will be for water pollution control. Water pollution control, these are the lists. West Shore Drive Lift Station for 798. General Pump Stations, money John puts in. Sometimes we're short with what we've been doing. We pay as we go because prices have been going up and inflating. So this can pay the difference. Simon Road Immediate Pump Work, 156. Collection System in advance of road work. And we would go in and try to do the repairs, so we don't then go rip them up after we pave. And the Major Sewer Line Replacement Reserve Fund, we know about that. Both of these two funds of 700 and 700 were depleted with Meadowlark spent about the million for, so we've got to replenish it now for these purposes. Next. So this is the timeline. Here we are, as we said, April 15th. We have those four budget review sessions set starting Wednesday, then the following Monday, Wednesday, ending on the date of the public hearing of April 29th, which is a Monday evening here at Town Hall. We also will be able to deliberate if there are some leftover questions by the council. We'll then do the CIP. Well, the CIP, one year I nearly forgot that, so I said, put it up so I don't. We have to propose the CIP request to planning and zoning to be in accordance with the charter. Then we adopt the budget by May 20th, and it becomes effective on the 24th. A couple of things that I would like to share with you, and I sent to council today. In addition to the proposals on the school modernization plan and upgrades, I sent you, we have been very good lately about scouring the state and the federal government for any grant availability. So Donald delineated one from, it's called the CDC Congressional Direct Grants. And I sent it to you today. So I know at our February meeting, we told you, we have about 30 million or 40 million for sewer lines and all of the pump stations. So the deadline was Sunday. We got the applications in. This will be before and for the consideration of Senator Murphy and Senator Blumenthal for $41 million. Again, it could be a year and a half. We don't know how much we're going to get. So we're still going to be addressing, you know, pump stations and sewer lines as best we can without overarching referendum to address it or some other way. So we've done that. Hopefully, we'll talk with the Board of Ed. There's some good scenarios about improving the schools and the money and the resources needed for that. And I think the future is bright. We have a strong and healthy fund balance. I think we're doing a lot, not only to invest in the infrastructure and in the town, but also for recreation and athletics, being responsible to seniors and to the young people, helping education. And I'm proud to work here as your town manager, come back and do this budget. I think it's been very challenging times, but this council is well-equipped and well-experienced, and I think in a great position to look at this, to work with the Board of Ed as we move forward in the next phases and come up with a fair budget for the town and for everybody that lives in it. And with that, I conclude. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, the council had to listen to it twice. But for the audience, I hope it was informative. And the only thing I can say, we were supposed to submit it to the CIP last week, and I forgot again. So we'll do it next week. So even with the list, not perfect. And with that, I would turn it over to Charlotte for her presentation on behalf of the Board of Education. Welcome, Charlotte.
Thank you for having me. Okay, here we go. Cool. Great. So thanks for having me tonight. Chris Drazek couldn't be here. So as per the town charter, here I am. I'm delivering the budget. And you have all seen, well, I hope you have all seen, the superintendent's presentation that was on February 14th. Then board leadership had a discussion at Town Council deliberations on April 17th. And now here I am to present to you our budget. It's not going to look like the superintendent's, and it won't look like how it was presented a couple of weeks ago. I redid it with some extra details that I think will help clearly explain our budget and our ask this year. So here we go. All right, so here's all 13 of our branches of education in our school system. This is who we are. So a little presentation of school spirit and education in action. Doing some cool things in our schools. I think this is the pre-K using their iPads. All right. So now we got Enfield Public Schools by the numbers. I'm going to tell you the nitty-gritty facts and figures that build up our budget. So Enfield Public Schools students and staff, district enrollment for '22 to '23 was 4,913. For '23 to '24, as of October 1st of '23, it was 4,826. As of Friday, when we recheck the numbers, we are at 4,891 students. The total number on top of that, which includes Magnet School and Enfield Transitional Learning Academy, is 5,199 students. So we project 25 as 4,800 students. We have demographic projections, and the historical view is that we always exceed the projections. So the projection was at 4,714. So we projected a little higher because we always come in higher. So students with special needs, our students with 504s and IEPs. That's what special needs is. So for '22 to '23, the percentage was 18.77%. For current '23 to '24, it's 20.31%. And we're projecting it to be for '25, 21%. And there's going to be plenty of other slides about special needs later. Full-time equivalent employees, '22 to '23, we had 684.25. For '23 to '24, 684.25. Now, the projected number for '25, which is in the budget, is 750.9. And this is because, and you'll see in slides coming forward, that we used federal grant money to pay for those extra staff members, so they weren't included in our budget numbers. So the little pie chart on the bottom is how they're assigned. The right side is the state, how they divvy up their administrators, instructional specialists, gen ed teachers, library, and media. And the left is how our distribution is. So a lot of people talk about per pupil expenditures. EdSite is a state website. And what the state does is they take numbers from what we provide them, what the town provides them. They even go right into our systems and pull the numbers now. So I just wanted to put this slide in there so you could see how the state of Connecticut defines our per pupil expenditures. So total per pupil expenditure as defined by the state is 18,637. That's what we pay per student. All right. Another thing that we have is Magnet School tuition. We send kids out. Parents want them to go out. So currently, there are 260 students that go to Magnet Schools. There are 189 kids that go to the actual Magnet Schools of the 43 schools. 23 of them go to Sophia Vowag, and 48 go to Prince Tech and Cheney Tech. So I only put some of the Magnet Schools up here because those are the ones that have the highest enrollment from our town. So the interesting fact is, the state reimburses us 53% of the tuition that we pay. But obviously, the state budget, why we say this is backwards, is because it's still in the flux. That number is actually projected to decrease substantially, which will then increase our portion that we need to pay out to send our students to Magnet Schools. Okay. So this is some good stuff about Enfield High. Here's our four-year graduation rate by year. The highest number they have on the state site is '21 to '22, and that's 89%. '20, '19, and '20 and '21 are a little higher. Those were obviously COVID years. There were probably some exceptions made to get students through at that point in time. But if you look at the years prior to that, we're slowly decreasing, but I think we're on the trend upward now. So here's the opportunities that we have at Enfield High right now. We have 36 honors classes. We have 25 AP and/or ECE classes. And ECE classes are called Early College Experience classes, and you get UConn credit for that. We have seven Connecticut State-SNUTUP partnership classes that are offered. There are three college connection classes, which are welding technology, machine technology, and electromechanical technology. We also have three CCP classes, which are college career pathway classes. That's honors Algebra II, Graphic Design and Production II, and Child Development Lab. And we also have EMT certification. State mandate that came in, but it's actually a really great program, is Personal Financial Management and Financial Literacy, which I think is key for any kid going out in the world. We have awesome things with United Sound, Unified Sports, Unified Arts. We have a great automotive program, Buzz Robotics, and Enfield High is an NEASC-credited school. So here's some of our accomplishments for '23 to '24. The Stowe Early Learning Center was recognized as an Apple Distinguished School. They're the only pre-K in the world that's been recognized.
One of two.
One of two in the world that's been recognized. Prudence Crandall, grade five student, Cameron McIntosh. He's a state finalist attending the National Invention Convention in Michigan. And we just found out that six more of our inventors have been identified to go to the state finals in June. Buzz Robotics, if you have a chance to see them, go. They finished sixth in New England, and they qualified for the world championship in Houston. They were there last week. And Sophia Carrier is a Dean's List finalist there, and she is 105 in New England and the first ever from Enfield High. We also have the Connecticut Association of Schools Excellence in Unified Sports Award given to William Bergman and Brendan Archer of Enfield High. They were actually at our last board meeting. Kianta Crawford, he is the Class Double L in Open Wrestling State Champion. JFK is also awarded the Continued NEASC Accreditation. The Enfield Public Schools Music Department, this just came through, was recognized as the Best Community for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation. Kelsey Higgins, she's a high school student. She came in second at State Skills USA Culinary Competition, and that's like the first time that we've been in there. Enfield High Business Students, they won first place at the Junior Achievement Stock Market Challenge. And Kelly Rosetti, a grade two teacher at Hazerville Memorial, she won the Curriculum Associates Extraordinary Educator for 2024. So we have a lot of good things going on. So here's our goals for '24 to '25. We want to successfully implement the new K5 reading program, which is a state mandate, so that costs the town money. The reading program that we chose through our pilot program and testing and rubric was called Into Reading. It's by, I always mess his name up, Houghton Mifflin?
Houghton Mifflin.
Houghton Mifflin-Hartcourt. That's $500,000 with a grant for five years. We've got, we want to continue to increase student performance on the state mandated tests, which is the grades three through eight, smarter balance, math and reading, the NGSS, which is the science for grades five, eight, and 11, and the grade 11 SATs, which is English and Math. We want to create a district attendance committee to focus on improving chronic absenteeism rates, and that's directly correlated to aligned status, and that's one indicator that we need to bring up. We want to continue the vision of a graduate work aligning to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We want to continue to expand the dual enrollment opportunities for students. Want to incorporate curricular opportunities to teach students digital citizenship and internet safety. We've already been doing that with a lot of things lately, like screenagers, and we've done some other things. We want to increase interventions to improve our four-year graduation rate. That's also another indicator. Actually, like, all of these are indicators. And we really want to increase student mentoring opportunities at the secondary level, which is JFK, with best buddies, Unified Sports, United Sound, Integrated Art, Social Theater Arts, and Integrated STEAM. So here's where projecting our future needs are. I didn't sign on here. But number one is, we need four special education teachers for '24. It is?
Yeah, under the bullets, the third bullet.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I'll go back. Erase that thought. So the transportation cost is going to increase significantly in '25 to '26 because we're going to have to go and renegotiate that. And transportation costs have gone up a lot throughout the state. Eagle Academy is at 27 for current, for '24 to '25. So an expansion or relocation would be needed to add more to that, and you'll see why in a little bit. We need continued classroom conversions for special needs for '24 to '25 with more anticipated in '25 and '26. We're going to need one, we already know we need one integrated pre-K room at the Stowe Early Learning Center. We need two developmental learning plan, DLP, classrooms. One Autism Spectrum Disorder class. And we need four full-time equivalent special education teachers and support staff. The other thing is, we have a state mandate now of the indoor air quality reporting, which Mr. Bronson already brought up. So it's approximately $240,000 for the five-year HVAC inspections. It's approximately $80,000 to pay for the annual inspections. And any updates, improvements, or corrections would obviously add to that cost. Plus, there's talk of you, we may have to update the equipment that we already have so that they can take accurate readings. And then the state also extended the age of special needs to 22, the full year of 22 instead of 21, because it used to be on their 21st birthday, whenever that birthday hit, they were done. Now, whenever their birthday falls at the age of 22, if their birthday is in September, they go the full year. If their birthday is in May, they go the rest of the full year. It doesn't matter. So that's an added enrollment cost there, bringing it up to 30. Okay. So Mr. Drazek always talks about this fiscal cliff, and where did all the money go? So the next few slides are going to show what we spent the federal money on. So the first batch that we got was coronavirus relief funds. We used that money during that time period to have three staff PD days for return to school to tell them how, you know, how are you going to teach in a pandemic? And, you know, safety and all that. We bought PP&amp;E COVID supplies. We rented tents so that kids could go outside and have lunch underneath them or have classrooms out there. We used it to, and here's where that budget impact comes in, where you didn't see the numbers of FTEs. We used that money for special education and long-term subs and paras, and then we also paid for custoding overtime. So this next batch of money that came in, elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, Essar. We used that for iPads. At the time, only Enfield High School had iPads. Now, everybody has an iPad. So obviously, that's a large cost. We bought obviously more PP&amp;E because that's, you know, a disposable. We kept renting the tents. And obviously, if you've got all these kids with iPads, you've got to get them online, so you need tech support. So for the Essar II grant, we use that again, continuing along the budgetary lines. Behavior checks, social workers. I mean, because the kids came back from the pandemic, it was not easy, obviously, for them. And for our teachers too, obviously, but definitely for the kids. Obviously, more supplies. Keep going with the iPads and tech support. That's an ongoing fee. And we also had to get two nurses, COVID coordinators, because everybody knows all that, you know, you had to stay out for this long, and you got to quarantine, and you got to do that, and the nurses were coordinating that. And then the last one. And then the last one is the American Rescue Plan. And with that, this is a big one, yep, $7 million. So we use that, behavior techs, social workers, security officers and monitors, because that's during the time period when a valedictation happened, and we wanted to increase school security at that point in time. We use it for some Stowe classrooms. We use it to pay the Enfield Street parking lot and the Enfield High Tennis Courts. And then for transportation, it's, you know, we had to train drivers again on how to deal in pandemic, extra runs, and the driver hero pay that we paid out. Obviously, still IT support and supplies and for Tesla teachers, which is, those are English?
English.
English language learners, teachers for them. Okay, so when they first came up with the budget, we started at 12.67%, but obviously, we know that's not going to fly in Enfield. So we did some administrative reductions and got it down by 3.99%. Here's what we need. We passed it on February 27. It's 8.68%, $6,589,527. There are three big numbers that you need to know to make this up. The teachers contractual increase, I'm talking just teachers, not everybody else, like cafeteria, nurses, paras, just the teachers contractual increase of 3.5% is $1,422,019. The next is contractual increases for all the other staff, nurses, paras, cafeterias, libraries, social workers, I could go on and on with all the staff that we have. That number is $1,688,713. The special education cost increase, since we got 78 new students just this year that moved into district, that number alone is $3,655,474. And if you add just those three numbers up, you're already over that number, you're at So we're already over what we're asking for, just with those three items. So I told you we're going to talk about special needs. So here's the impact to the budget from special needs, because it was obviously a large increase. Special needs encompasses pre-K to 12, the Enfield Transitional Learning Academy, the Eagle Academy, and any outplacements that we have for special needs. The current budget is $14.8 million. The projected is $18.4. Like I said before, 78 new special needs students moving into district this year that we obviously hadn't budgeted. We didn't know we were going to get 78 new students. The new state mandate that I talked about of increasing the age of the ETLA, the Transitional Learning Academy enrollment, up to 22. We currently, this number is as of Friday, have 1,423 special needs students. A thousand and three of them have an IEP, and 420 of them have a 504. So there are other students that get outplaced. This first line of private RES schools, those are students that we can't take care of here. Some, some of them are in, like, long-term care facilities, they go to hospitals, all the such. However, 27 are currently at Eagle Academy, and 27 more go out to these places. So if we didn't have Eagle Academy, we would be paying much more for 54 to go out. And outplace students can range, you know, they could go from 75 all the way up to 300 and something. So we say an average is like 100, 150 for an outplace student. The MAGA schools, those are just parents who have chosen to send their child to MAGA school, and they happen to have an IEP or a 504. So 28 students that we send out also have an IEP, so we pay their tuition and we pay for their special needs services. And then there's five state agency placed. So then this big one, the excess cost grant from the state of Connecticut to cover special needs per pupil expenditures after four and a half times the regular per pupil rate. So ours is like 18, whatever, you go four and a half times that, and then whatever we still need to pay for them at that point in time, the state's supposed to fund it at 100%. They don't. They currently fund it at 70. Next year, when I wrote this slide on Friday, it said it was projected to be flat or less next year. We got a notice today that it says 67%. So we're getting less now. So there's everything that we don't know. Insurance, oh, guess what? I just found something out today. Our insurance, we budgeted at 9%. It is now 11 and a half percent. The state budget, basically, it's still, I don't know what they're going to do with MAGA school tuition. We may have to pay out more for that. I still don't know how many retirements we have, and are we ever going to get the alliance grant? I don't know. 36 schools are in the alliance district, 35 get the grant, Enfield doesn't. So obviously, it's a fluid document because things have just changed in the past couple of days. Our commitment is that we want to work with the manager and the council to try to come up with, with something, but I've tried to illustrate for you that, like, this is what makes up our budget. So I hope it was helpful. And that's it.
Thank you, Charlotte. Andy, do you have anything you want to add?
Charlotte did a wonderful job.
She did.
Wonderful job. We have a great board chair, to say the least.
Okay, well, I want to thank Chris and Charlotte both for their presentation, and now we're going to roll into the public hearing. And here are the ground rules for the public hearing. The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current on Friday, April 19, 2024. Town of Enfield Legal Notice. Notice is hereby given that the town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing on the proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. The public hearing shall be Monday, April 29, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. The order of business for the 24-25 budget hearing shall be arranged as follows. One, presentation of the town manager's budget. Two, the superintendent of schools, highlights and Board of Education budget. Three, comments from members of the public for the first time. And there will be no back and forth. This is, come up, address the council with your budget concerns only. We have signup sheets right there. I currently have a signup sheet in front of me, and I will just go in the order that they came, except for the first person who I spoke with a week ago, and due to medical issues, he will be called up first. So Raymond Peabody, come on up.
Each, each speaker will have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Raymond Peabody, 370 Washington Road, our fair town. First of all, thank you, Charlotte, for your presentation. You hit a lot of my bullet points and hot buttons. One of it is, we do have a very high number of special needs kids. 55% was what the superintendent had said we had. He lumped on the ESL, the English Second Language folks in there. Charlotte, thank you for breaking that out. But I do want to point out the, the English Second Language. Two years ago, we had 14 different languages in our public schools that required to have a tutor hired for some of these, and the most difficult one at that time, actually, was Mandarin, Chinese Mandarin. Hard to find that type of tutor in that particular language, but they did. And the other thing is, when we talk to the state, we got to tell them not to sit there and make these kids take the state test one year after they come into Enfield or anywhere. And the reason why is what I learned over the years working with international folks is, I have a different language, but I hear you, I'm listening to you in my native tongue. I'm translating that into English on my response. So this takes a little bit longer for these folks to actually give you a response. So you know what? I think maybe it'd be a good idea to give them two, maybe three years before they're made to take the exact same test as our mainstream students. Same with the special needs kids, they should not be taking the same test as our students. That would help boost their scores a little bit. One comment I want to make is on the per-student expenditure. Charlotte's absolutely right, I went into the website too, and it's $18,637 per student. That's total. The instructional cost per student is $12,575. I think people get those two confused, but actually, the whole, the whole total is 18,000. Graduation rates, Enfield High had an 89% graduation rate for, for '21-'22. The state average was 88.9. In 2021, we had 93.8. State average, again, was 88.9. We're in the alliance district, and this is the first time tonight I heard any actions to try to remedy us getting out of the alliance district. I have not seen a plan, an action plan on the Board of Ed site with the details. I think that'd be really good for the community to know, because they focus on one item, and that's, oh my God, we're not taking the test right. It's a number of other variables, as I've said before, before this council and the board. It's, what is it, 48 to 52% are free and loose lunch programs. That's an impact. And there's other impacts, there are social impacts, not just what the school system's doing. And the free and loose, reduced lunch program is not a poverty thing. It's a lot of folks who have gone from two earner incomes to a single earner income, and it's tough when you're trying to keep food on the table, a roof over your head, and pay attention to what your kids are doing. That's just sometimes humanly impossible, or very tough. Budget notes. The town budget's $161 million, of which the Board of Ed budget is $82,519,82. We don't know what the state funding's going to be, and my biggest gripe has always been is we always present that, the big number. Well, let's just say, for an example, if we got 30% total grants from the state, that would bring that, that 82,000 down to 57, I mean, 82 million down to 57 million. I think the town folks and the voters that vote for us, or you guys, need to know that. A few years ago, when I was on the board, I brought that up, but I guess that never got changed. I had also, on the original budget presentation, was heavy emphasis on being underfunded by the state. That's true, but there's also been some really good accomplishments. In the budget book itself, which I brought my copy from 2016, there were no accomplishments or highlights in the budget book presented to you guys. No goals, no objectives, no budget commentary, no future, specific future needs. Charlotte, you provided a lot of that tonight. Thank you. There's heavy emphasis on special ed as needed, but doesn't seem to be too much on, on our mainstream kids. 48% of our kids, or 45% are mainstream students. I think they deserve some attention. They deserve the acknowledgements, like what Charlotte presented and what Marilyn presented on Facebook regarding our culinary staff. And I greatly appreciate that. Being a former board member, tell people what we're doing. Show them what we're doing, show them the value add that Enfield Public Schools brings to the community. One of the things I always said is, our schools are our center and shining star for the town of Enfield. It's one of the reasons why people move into town. Lastly, I just want to say, we see the problem, the challenge of the BOE budget, it's backwards. We shouldn't have to have a finalized budget until state approves whatever they're going to send our way. How do we change it? We've got to take a look at the charter, and then we have to get a hold of the state. Thank you, and appreciate your time and courtesy, Ken.
Thank you, Ray. Next up is George Young.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane. The past two years, the town has not given the BOE the 1.4 million per year that they wanted, which was coming supposedly from the state. And at the same time, they made an excellent, it made excellent sense not to give it to them because there was no guarantee the state would give the town those funds. I believe the town did eventually get that total of 2.8 million, and it went to the general fund. This year, the town will probably have a windfall reserve of approximately $25 million. I can't believe I'm saying this, so hold on to your seats. I propose that the town transfer from the reserve $3 million to offset the school costs and make sure all students and staff have paper as needed, which would have no budget impact. This year, I hope the council does a better job of reviewing the school budget, because as I have previously stated at council meetings, that a good budget does not see about 38 categories with the same budget for two years in a row in two separate areas. The town manager's example shows the property tax cost of $4,512, with a projected mill rate of 32.23 on a $200,000 home. This reminds me of when he told, when he sold us the bond referendum to borrow money for the WPC plant renovation. There was a 20-year amortization schedule, and we were shown 10 years with an interest cost with a rate of 2%. We all know that that rate was probably only good for one year, and then we paid to the nose. It was a bad example then, and a $200,000 Enfield home is a bad example now. I believe the average value in Enfield is between $250,000 and $275,000. If we use 260 as an average, then that would be an assessed value of $182,000, which is 70% of the 260,000. That tax would be $5,866 versus his example of $4,512. I know I would like to pay $1,350 less. Perhaps the assessor's office could confirm this average value to give us a more realistic sample property tax on our homes when examples are provided. Don't be fooled by an example that is unrealistic. Last year, the council approved a $400 credit against the July 1 property tax payment for seniors who otherwise qualified and did 50 hours of community service. I hope that this, this program continues into the future. In my previous example, I tried to explain that my revised average of a house in Enfield would cost $5,866 in property taxes. This is extortion for seniors in this town. I would like to suggest that one of the council members propose a resolution at the May 6 council meeting to freeze the assessment and mill rate at the 2023 assessment and mill rate going forward for seniors aged 70 and older and who have a home in Enfield for at least five years. The details of dates could be worked out. Councilman Henderson, perhaps you could propose this to the mayor and fellow council members. The seniors, such as me, may have great grandchildren in the schools, but very few have children there, and I feel like it is our monies helping to create the $25 million fund balance. We seniors need assistance to continue our standard of living in this town. The state revenue from the Mashin-Tocket Pequot and Mohegan Grant of $1,224,751 has been flat funded in the budget since at least fiscal year 2021. Why aren't we getting more money from the state? Especially since the two tribes were given substantial additional income from the approval of online betting that has shown record-breaking betting that we see widely publicized. I believe one of our state representatives should be enlightening us a little bit more on that issue. When you vote for a new state representative this year, ask them, how will they help Enfield get more revenue sharing for the children with needs and from the revenue for the, from the additional gaming the Indian tribes are receiving? Last year, the council backed away from raising our sewer use fee, even though it should have been done. This year, you are asking us to pay more for the fees but are keeping the $39 fixed fee. How can that be eliminated? Since the inception of the transaction from the cost being part of the mill rate in fiscal '21 to a separate fee, the WPC has been paying the town approximately $428,000 a year for management and computer support. I believe it is time for this charge to stop because there is no support for it, yet the taxpayers are still paying the bill. Let the, let the cost of the town manager and the assistant manager be part of the same budget and stop burdening the WPCA.
Mr. Mayor, I said privilege of the flag. I would never correct somebody making an opinion at a public hearing, but when Mr. Young indicates that I made statements about supporting the referendum for the public works facility, I wasn't the town manager. I made no recommendations. I came in years after. Thank you.
Okay, we're not going to have a back and forth, and...
But I think that's important because misstatements, I don't...
I understand. Next will be Melanie Kurpatska... Next will be Melanie Culpecsa.
Close. Melanie Culpecsa, 200 North Maple Street, Enfield.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to ask you to approve the complete town budget as presented by the town manager and the chairperson of the Board of Education. I appreciate all of our town services and personnel. I believe that they are valuable to Enfield, and they should all be fully funded. Tonight, however, I'm going to focus on the schools. I have been a school counselor at JFK for 26 years. At the start of my career, much of my job involved helping students transition to the middle school, working with them to improve their grades, helping them with peer issues and personal issues, and preparing them to transition to the high school. Those things are still very much a part of my job. As you know, mental health issues have become a growing concern among our nation's youth. Even before the pandemic, we were seeing an increase in kids presenting with symptoms and diagnoses of anxiety and depression. Since then, those struggles have become even more prevalent among our student body. Teachers and staff are now dealing with many more issues than ever before, and they are doing it all with limited resources. I did not grow up in Enfield, but my daughter has. She is a product of the Enfield Public Schools and is currently a junior in college. Throughout her education, she has had so many wonderful teachers. From her teachers at Hazerville, who helped her get off to a good start and learn to love school. Her teachers at Prudence Crandall, who prepared her for middle school. Her teachers at JFK, who helped her navigate through some of the toughest years in a child's life. And her teachers at Enfield High School, who made sure she was prepared and ready for college. All of them have helped her learn and grow into the confident young lady she is today. They didn't do this because she was my kid. They did this because she was one of their kids. And that is how the teachers and staff of the Enfield Public Schools see all of our students. We teach them, protect them, inspire them, and care about them. I want all of the children in Enfield to continue to have everything that my daughter has had, because they deserve the best as well. Please, fully fund the budget for the Board of Education in order to continue to keep the necessary resources and services in place to help our students grow, thrive, and be fully prepared for the future. Thank you.
Greg Skorrenson.
Sure. All right. Hi, my name is Greg Scherens. I live at 19 Sam Street. I'm a science teacher up at the high school. I've come today to voice my concerns about how much we could stand to lose if the schools are not properly funded. My wife and I are two of the 121 teachers that received non-renewal letters on Friday. This is my second year in the district, and my wife's third. I do want to point out that while I don't think that anybody meant to say this in particular, in one of the last meetings, somebody basically said that by getting rid of some of the newer teachers, they're not necessarily the most experienced, but like, between my wife and I, we have 20 years-plus teaching experience. We came here because we wanted to serve the community that we live in. I've been tenured in other places, and I decided to come here out of choice, because I like the idea of teaching where I live and making the community a better place. My wife was actually recruited here without even applying. So I guess the first place I'd like to start is how regardless of how this all turns out, we will be losing talented and experienced staff. Even though I could very well get my job back and be told such before the end of the year, my wife and I are already looking somewhere else for employment. This isn't because we want to leave, we definitely don't, but I can't wait to see whether or not we have a job, and several other teachers will also not be able to wait, because I have kids at home that I need to feed, and I need to know that I have a place that I'm going to be working. This also doesn't seem like the best time to do this, because we're also in the middle of a historic teacher shortage nationwide. My wife actually earned her doctorate last year doing research on that very topic, and the long-term picture for teacher shortages is bleak. Anyone we lose now would be hard to replace. We're simply not going to see the batches of fresh teachers out there that we once did. They were teaching programs nationwide that are shutting their doors due to a lack of attendance. This should worry all of us. And let's look past the fact that, like, some of us may be unemployed. The problems will go deeper, much deeper. If we lose staff, class sizes will go up. The amount of time I can give to individual students will decrease, and trust me when I say as someone teaching almost all co-taught classes, there already isn't enough time to work with each student. I will not be able to give my students the highest quality education, a stated goal of this council on their website. Parents and students will be negatively affected by this. Students that struggle will have less one-on-one time with teachers, something that can make or break a student's time in school. Perhaps a student does excel in school, though. Academics is not an issue. That's excellent. However, with less teaching staff, the amount of electives that we can offer also will decrease. While some may try and devalue some of the electives as non-vital, it would be a mistake not to mention that some of these electives would also include AP classes. So now our most talented students, the most ambitious ones, will have less chance to show off what they can do. Parents, it is very important that you understand that this means there's less opportunity for your child to earn college credits ahead of college, saving potentially thousands of dollars. When I was in high school about 20 years ago, which makes me feel kind of old, I was able to walk into my college with a full semester already done. If we lose teachers, we are going to make it impossible for that to happen here if cuts are deep. The amount of choices students have will decrease. With that decrease in choice, I fully expect to see a decrease in engagement from some students, because there's just that special class sometimes that students have that just lights something off, and suddenly, they have a place to be. Lastly, I'd like to cover my disagreement with having armed guards in the school as both a staff member and a parent who has enrolled my daughter to start school in Enfield next year. Though gun violence in schools is a very serious and uniquely American problem, if guns are going off in the school, we've already failed. We know that most of these shootings are done by students, so clearly, those students have been failed again and again before they get to that point. I do not understand why we would be removing more staff, staff that students enjoy and trust, for someone new they don't know. One of the best things we can do for students is put as many adults in the building that they can trust. I've seen people at the high school respond, that are working security now, respond and de-escalate several encounters. Some of our most tricky students have actually developed very, very positive relationships with some of these security people that we already have employed at the schools, and get those students back to class, reset them if need be, and basically just make the school run better. Instead of spending lots of money on a problem that might happen, we should be investing more into things that will actually help more students 100%, and perhaps catch more troubled students well before there is danger. I urge the leadership of Enfield to go back to their stated goals for education in this town, to provide the highest quality education services to students. This is a difficult task, as is without cuts. To provide the tools and environment necessary to provide such services to teachers and administrators. Cuts would certainly do the opposite of this and stretch us further. To encourage all stakeholders to succeed, be involved, and be informed, I am here informing you all now about the very real and dire consequences that can come from making a lot of cuts. If you want to see Enfield schools succeed, we have to make that investment. It's expensive, it's exhausting, and it's entirely doable if the will and support from the town is there. Thank you, and have a good night.
Sherry Winans.
Ooh. Stop. Hi, I'm Sherry Winans, 1227 Enfield Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Enfield, and I've gone through this little system and been very proud of that. And now, I'm also a proud graduate of Enfield High School, who came back here to teach in my hometown after college. I am almost finished with my 33rd year of teaching here in Enfield. I have been an educator in Enfield, starting at Barnard, going to Alcorn, through the shutdown to Crandall, and now I'm a 5th grade teacher at Prudence Crandall. I'm simply here to say that I've experienced a lot of highs and lows when it comes to budget season here in Enfield, including being laid off myself after my own first year of teaching due to a reduction in force. It was very unsettling and upsetting at the time, therefore, I know personally what our pink slip teachers are feeling at this time. My colleague Amy Guzzi has made a little visual this past Friday, as already stated. 121 certified staff members received a pink slip. This is a 24.6% of our entire staff in Enfield. And just a little visual to give you an idea of how many kids we're going to lose. And when I say kids, I mean my younger teachers, because I'm so old. Even though I'm very high on the seniority list, I'm still feeling unsettled and upset, because I don't know what the future holds. If we don't receive the proposed increase to our budget, I'm nervous as to what that means for our school system. This budget is to maintain status quo. It doesn't get us anything new, it simply keeps our current programming and staff in place. I know personally at Crandall that our new teachers that we have gotten this year have been an amazing addition to our staff. They are smart, creative, hardworking, and very dedicated to our students in Enfield. I can't imagine losing any of this talent, and trust me, you don't want to lose them either. We, as teachers, are already stretched thin, and losing staff would be detrimental to all, because increasing class size is the last thing that should be happening in schools in today's day and age. The needs of students coming into our classrooms are so different from when all of us were in school. As I stated, this is year 33 for me, and I've seen quite the change in what we teachers must do for our students. Teachers can really meet our students' needs when class sizes are under 20. However, that requires keeping the staff that we have. So I'm simply asking for the budget that was put forth by the Board of Education be supported as is. Please do not ask us to do more with less.
I can't read half this writing.
May I help you?
You show me an end on that.
Okay, well, I would have guessed it. I'll help you.
Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey Road. I'm a parent of three children, next year will be three, in the high school. Am I excited about the prospect of my taxes going up? No, I'm not a fool. But I'm one who believes that when something is valuable, you are willing to support it. Our kids are valuable. Our town is valuable. Mr. Nelson, you're a Realtor. I think there might be other ones on here that I don't know. What's one of the primary things that a family coming into town, looking at homes, is going to ask you? I know it's not back and forth, so I'm going to answer for you. It is schools. Quality of schools. The importance that the town places on the schools. The investment that the town is willing to make in the schools. That's your primary selling force. If you gut this budget, you gut our property values. So our taxes are just going to go up anyway, because there's less of a grand list. Now, on to other things. If you cut the budget for the schools, you're being penny wise and pound foolish. It will help for this year. It's not going to help in the long term, because as Ms. Winans just said, and a couple of the other people who teach our kids, the needs are greater, and they are getting even more so. If they do not have the support or the time to take care of what these children need, especially in the younger grades, then they're going to have much greater needs as they go higher and higher in the grades. And everybody's boogeyman, special needs, is going to increase. But let's talk about when we talk about special needs. Numbers are being thrown around here, but they're not accurate. Special needs is approximately 25% of our kids. As the board chair said, those are the 504 and IEP students. Those are the students with particular developmental, educational, or mental health needs that need specific supports. The high needs, which is more the 55% that people talk about, is kids who are having come from a family that is struggling to feed them, that is struggling to make ends meet. That's not a problem with the child. But that does impact the child in their day-to-day. If you know you're not going home, and you're not sure if you're having dinner, or if you didn't have dinner the night before, you can't pay attention the way you should in school. So no, we're not throwing money out the window when we provide them breakfast, or a reduced lunch, or a free lunch. We're giving their bodies and their brains the fuel that they need to be able to learn. And isn't that what we want them to do, so that they can become productive, successful citizens in our town? If we end up cutting programs, losing staff, and then in a couple of years, hey, let's give the board, the school board, the money that they actually need. To rebuild is a much greater project than to maintain. You lose the staff, you lose the inside knowledge of how things are done, and what people need, and who the people that you draw from for the help, the knowledge. They're gone, because, hey, they were pink slipped, and they're not fools. They got to pay their bills, so they went elsewhere. Think they're going to want to come back to a place where they're not sure if it's going to be for a year, two, or that? Another thing about drawing people to the town is show how you value these kids, and are you providing the kids with more than the bare minimum? We have some incredible programs, like Ms. the chair said about the music and arts program. It's top-notch. And that's something that someone who's looking in different districts, that's something that stands out, because not everybody has it. For us to have that, that is huge. My daughter will likely graduate with more than a semester of college because of the ECE and AP classes, and because of the flexibility of the staff there who is willing to work with her and say, you know what? You can do this, we're going to figure out a way for you to do this. Don't cut there, cut them off at the legs. Don't do it.
Thank you. Kelsey McGuire Bruce.
Hi, Kelsey McGuire Bruce, 63 Neelands Road. Tonight, we are all here to speak about the town budget, a budget that impacts every resident in this town in different ways. I have senior family members in town on set incomes. I have family in town whose children have gone through the school system and whose tax dollars for education no longer support their own children. I have, as I'm sure you have, tried and will continue to try, to see all perspectives regarding this budget. I am a resident who pays taxes, and I work multiple jobs to stay afloat in this economy. I will struggle with a tax increase like so many others. I would love to see our tax lowered, like anyone else, but not if it means underfunding education. If it means supporting our schools, I will gladly take it on. Why? Because I see the reality of underfunding every single day. I was there when pink slips were handed out to stellar teachers this past Friday. 121 staff were told, you may not have a job. What do you think they did this weekend? I would bet they looked for other jobs, not because they want to leave, but because they can't afford to be without one. I understand the impact that would have on class sizes and student learning. I know the impact those cuts would have on the staff we have left. I see the needs of the students of Enfield in today's world every single day. I have funded supplies for my own classroom for the last 12 years. I've written grants to get funding for items for myself or my school that they needed, created Donors Choose projects, and begged family and friends to donate. But maybe more importantly, I see every day how the lack of staffing increases student behaviors and decreases student growth. Those words shouldn't be in that order. Yes, believe it or not, having adequate staff in a building does help, and it does matter. Students who need parent support, sure, special ed is state mandated, but we're giving them the bare minimum. Yes, believe it or not, having adequate staff in a building does help, and it does matter. Students who need parent support, sure, special ed is state mandated, but we're giving them the bare minimum. Students who need interventions are in groups that we can no longer call small. We are continuing to negatively impact the growth of students in our schools because we cannot properly staff or provide the proper programming for them. I mentioned earlier that this budget impacts everyone differently. I know some people believe that they have no skin in the game for education, so why should they have to pay for it? Well, someone else just mentioned, what is the first thing that people with children look at when looking for a home? You know, it's true, it's the schools. So if we keep underfunding, and we can watch the property values decrease, and the number of people that move out of this town continue to grow, it does impact everyone. You can say that this situation is not the board's fault, and this board's fault, and I don't disagree. We can sit here and point fingers at the state and past boards, and the truth is, they have all failed us. The collective us I speak of is myself, my colleagues, and more importantly, the students and families of this town. Sure, we have not received the alliance money we deserve to help move us forward. That is one piece, a piece I agree that we need to continue to fight for. No argument from me there. But the past boards in our town have failed to maintain our budget for years too. Since 2011, the town budget has increased 3.13%, and since 2011, the school budget has only increased 1.31%. We all know that that inflation rate is much higher than the increase for our school's budget. Last year, at this meeting, I reminded you that this increase, and I put that in quotes, does not actually increase anything in our schools, it simply maintains what we have. And I said last year, and I'll say it again, we cannot afford to lose any of it. We are barely surviving with what we have now. Truth be told, I debated coming to speak tonight. I, along with many others, feel defeated. All of this has been said by myself and countless others for years, but it seems to continue to fall on deaf ears. When is it enough? When have teachers done enough and it's time for someone else to stand up for us and our students? So tonight, I ask you, please, do not be another group that fails us. Don't just feed us the words, we care about education, we care about schools, we support the teachers. I know, I know you want to, but follow up with a vote that does that, not does the opposite. Charlotte, thank you for your presentation tonight. It was wonderful, and thank you all for your time.
Mr. Mayor.
Aiden Tetrault.
Mr. Mayor, not to be doing back and forth, but some people have complained that it's a little warm and muggy, so we're going to take a moment to open the back doors, these doors, and these windows, and if it gets too loud or cold, let us know and we'll close them.
Is the AC not on yet?
Yeah, it's too early. We can't turn it on.
Right. Aiden. Welcome, Aiden.
Members of the council, my name is Aiden Tetrault, and I am a junior at Enfield High School. I have been enrolled in seven college-level courses during my three years at Enfield High, and these total 21 to 24 credit hours at the university, such as UConn. I am also a member of multiple, I'm also a member of multiple Enfield High School Music Ensemble, including the marching band and the symphony orchestra. My goals for my senior year at Enfield High are to stay involved in music and the community while graduating Enfield High School with a full year of college credits to my name. The completion of these goals is dependent on what happens in this room today. I'd like to be clear, I am aware that COVID funding provided to us by the state has run dry. I'm aware there are certain items in the school's budget, such as special education, that can't be touched. I'm aware that the state of Connecticut has promised us funding, which we haven't received, relating to our status as an alliance district. However, I am also aware that the town council budget has increased at a far greater rate than the Board of Education budget. If we want to get out of our status as an alliance district, the solution isn't to cut teachers, staff, and programs. The solution isn't to cut classes. The solution is to increase education funding. Why am I here? A high school is a place where information travels fast, and while this often has a negative connotation, it carries the information regarding what Enfield High plans to do, regarding a planned cut in funding, to be released to the student body before an official announcement has been made. Please allow me to share. Enfield High School currently runs on an eight-period schedule, four periods a day on an A-B rotation. We also have a three-period called Eagle Block in the middle of our day, which students use to get help from teachers, make up assignments and tests, and attend clubs. Assistant Superintendent Longy piloted this block during case time at Enfield High, intending to increase student-teacher connection, a goal this block executed in. The drafted schedule for next year currently features seven classes without an Eagle Block to account for the potential decrease in staff. Decreasing the number of teachers we have in our Enfield schools would decrease the number of classes a student would take, restricting their options for classes. Enfield High School currently offers 210 courses, 25 of which are college-level, 36 honor level, and 119 being full-year courses. This same level of choice in classes will not be possible with the restriction of budget being talked about by the town council. These budget cuts would increase the size of every student's classroom, grades 3-K through 12, which would decrease the focus a teacher can have on each of their students. These budget cuts would hinder every student's ability at Enfield High to ask for help due to the removal of a block of time within the day, which was brought in for exactly that reason. Cutting our budget is not the way to get out of our status as an alliance district. It is the way to sink further into the status. Remember, I, along with many of the juniors and seniors you'll affect today, will be voting soon. Are you all the remainder of my time? Thank you, council, and have a good night.
Thank you, Aiden. Peter Genitis.
I just want to start by saying I appreciate the job that teachers are doing, and I wish that there was only one thing to consider when setting the budget. I truly believe that there are areas that may be cut without dealing with letting any staff go. I come here to speak before you tonight with wearing four hats. 38 years of teaching experience, witnessing tremendous changes over that time. Being a member of the Board of Education and getting elected four times. My first six years, I looked at it like I was doing civic duty. Then I walked away. I got back on the board this past year because I was very unhappy with what was happening with the previous board and the school administration. Thirdly, my wife and I have lived in Enfield since the mid-1970s, raised our family here, our three kids, and one is actually, one is actually a high school English teacher. I have seen this town grow. I've seen it stabilize and shrink when it comes to the number of kids in industry. And my fourth hat I wear, I don't know where it is, I keep forgetting where I left it, it's lost. Westport, New Canaan, Greenwich, Darien, Wilton, Glastonbury, Ridgefield, Farmington, Avon, Fairfield, Simsberry, Monroe, Cheshire, Chesher, Madison, East Lime, West Hartford, Guilford, Trumbull, Newtown, Old Lime, Rocky Hill, South Windsor, Waterfield, Waterford, Old Sabre, Canton, Coventry, Milford, Grahamby, Suffield. That said, these are towns that have been given an A-plus or A-rating for providing for the best education for their students. If that's what you want, please don't take this the wrong way, then move to one of these towns. But wait, you can't. Why? Because people, most people living in Enfield can't afford to live in those communities. I listen, or listen, the Enfield, Enfield provides an inordinate amount of services to our citizens. It costs money, lots of money. We can only pay for what we can afford. And the town budget, which includes the school budget, is strapped for monies. There are likely going to be some cuts in many departments, or at least minimal increases per negotiated contracts. I voted against the school budget, asking for an increase of 8.68. Why? The last year, the school budget, last year, the school budget was presented to the Board of Education with four or five pages. This year, Charlotte, Phil, and myself have asked for more, a more detailed budget, and what did we get? Approximately 60 pages of numbers. Dr. Schuman and I didn't always see eye to eye and everything, but that man knew how to, knew how to prepare a budget book. And our present superintendent was there to assist him. The old budget book had a written narrative for each school, each department, and everything that costs money. The narrative addressed four key issues. One, accomplishments and highlights. Two, goals and objectives. Three, budget commentary. Four, future needs. It was all written out for the Board of Ed to see, for the town council to see, for the teachers to see, and for the public to see. And the attached, and it was also attached with the numbers. We, the Board of Ed, did not get a detailed explanation, therefore, I voted no. Publicly, I publicly stated that at one of the board meetings that I wanted the superintendent to justify clearly and concisely the needs of our schools, at which time, I'd hap, I would be happy to support the 8.68 budget increase. In my opinion, to do so otherwise is only asking for chaos, doubt, and a multitude of unanswered questions. And let's not blame COVID and special ed. The whole country had to deal with these issues. Federal money gave, given to communities all across the country, a boatload of money to spend, and we spent ours. The question is, now is, can we afford to continue to pay for some of the programs and hires we made with the federal funding money without raising our taxes even higher? My sympathies go out to the town council, for you have an enormous decision to make with the year, with this year's budget. Thank you. And I hope, teachers, you understand, it's more than just, just the teachers, because if we could keep all of you, no problem.
Thank you, Peter. Next, Angela Foss.
Oh, Peter, what have you done? Angela Foss, 16 Crescent Beach Drive. Good evening, town council members. You know how much I appreciate everything that you do. I brought a book with me. I just thought you might want to see this, because I don't know how much you get to see of these things. This is the new math program that we're using, that we started with. Really, this is the new, we got this, this year, this new book. All of these extra things we're trying to do cost money. This comes with a program on the iPad. It's called iReady Math. You can do any research on it if you'd like to. It's a spectacular program. It's making a world of difference in grades 3 to 5 children. And I know, as someone has already said, there's also going to be a brand-new language arts program starting next year. All these things are very expensive, in addition to everything else that you've heard about. I have here this historic perspective, and I gave you all a copy of this. This is, this was on the superintendent's website. I didn't create this. So it says, in 2014 to 2015, the superintendent requested 4.98% of an increase, and the BOE, the BOE approved 3%, and the town appropriated 0%. In 2015, 2016, the superintendent requested 8.75% of an increase. Then the BOE asked for 7%, and the town council approved 2.52%. 2016 to 2017, the superintendent asked for 9.09%. The BOE approved 7.23%, and the town appropriated 3.20%. In 2017, 2018, it was 4.98% on the superintendent's side, 4.53% on the BOE, 2.5% is what was budgeted, and so on and so forth too. 2019 to 2020, the BOE budget went up 56 hundredths of a percent. And then in 2020 and 21, 0%. And then in 2021 to 2022, again, 58 hundredths of a percent. So we are an alliance district. Did anybody see the writing on the wall here? I mean, it's just the numbers speak for themselves. The writing was on the wall. And I know that a lot of you were here back in those years. Nobody thought there would be an issue, but guess what? This has come home to roost. So I did a little bit of math. The town side of the budget increase for the past 10 years has been 40.35%. While the school increase during the same time was only 16.85%. The average annual increase for the past 10 years on the town side has been 3.13%, while the school has only been 1.31%. So just to catch up to the town increases, the education budget would need to increase That's what we need just to catch up. In November, our budgets, our school supply budget was frozen. You know what that means? It means we can't get a penny for anything. Any supplies we need, it was frozen. That means teachers have to buy all their materials. We couldn't even hire paraprofessionals. We had brand-new special ed students come in, we couldn't hire another paraprofessional because the budget was frozen. I don't think you really, I hope that you will pass this budget as it stands, because I can't imagine you are aware of this. And also, this is not me, because you know that I don't care about money, but I gave you paperwork on what the teachers who are on the highest salary increase have been receiving. And you're hearing a 3.5% increase across the board. The teachers who have been here 12 years plus, next year will receive our increase, 1.5%. Then next year, our increase will be 1.5%. But the, but the rub is that our insurance is going up with that. In four years, I did the math, I gave you a copy of it, in four years, teachers, hold on to your hats, between the difference, we have made an increase of $609.97 total. That has been our increase because of the insurance going up, $609.97. Just so you know. Thank you.
I know it's difficult to hear for the state, for the city council, the amount needed to
run our schools efficiently for the next school year, but as a Board of Education member, I feel that the number-one concern in our town should be what is best for Enfield's schoolchildren. Therefore, certain programs need to stay, of course, like special needs interventions, and of course, I'm an advocate for mental health and wellness in our school system. After hearing tonight's presentation by Chairwoman Riley, and also having meetings with Dr. Callan, Deputy Superintendent Longy, with the Directors of Counseling and Special Education, I strongly feel that our students not only need the academic support, but they also need the emotional support as well. And this will help bring success in their daily classroom learning, and we saw that with Chairwoman Riley when she was highlighting the great things that are happening in the school system. I feel that if a child is struggling emotionally, then his or her academic progress will probably suffer as well. If there has to be cuts, I think, or I would like to see the town council and the Board of Education work together to find a way to cut in places that will have the least impact on our students' productive learning and the least impact on our teaching and staff. Thank you.
I am 74th Bruce Lynn Road. I am a I am a retired pediatrician, and I am on the Board of Education. The childhood mental health epidemic is getting worse with time, and our schools are suffering as a result. Children cannot learn unless they are well, mentally as well as physically. And children who are in close proximity to a child suffering a meltdown also suffer in terms of emotional distress and lost opportunities for learning. This budget is inadequate in meeting the mental health needs of our students. If we cannot improve on it at this year, at least let us not cut the school budget as presented, and let us hope we can do better next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Wilcox.
My name is Michelle Wilcox. I live at 5 Cheryl Drive. I am a lifelong resident of Enfield, and I have taught in this town for more than 30 years. I come to you today to address a critical issue that affects not only teachers and staff in Enfield, but more importantly, the students of Enfield. We are entrusted to shape. The proposed increase to maintain the status quo may seem like a simple budgetary adjustment, but it carries profound implications for the quality of education that we can provide. We need every cent of that proposed increase. It is important that everyone here understands the ramifications it will have on our students, our teachers, and the future of education in our community. Teachers are tasked with instructing students and nurturing our students' intellectual, emotional, and social growth. However, without adequate resources and support, their ability to fulfill these duties will be severely compromised. The proposed increase, while aiming to maintain the status quo, falls short of addressing the pressing needs within our schools. It fails to account our students' population's diverse range of needs, from students requiring specialized instruction due to a lack of proficiency in an area, to those with advanced capabilities needing enrichment. Our teachers must be equipped to cater to every student, yet without sufficient funding, they will be forced to navigate these challenges with limited resources. Moreover, it's crucial to recognize the broader context of underfunding that has plagued our educational system for years. The State of Connecticut and our Town Council have consistently failed to prioritize education. Angela Foss just demonstrated that through her speech. Perpetuating a cycle of neglect that has a detrimental effect on our schools, we cannot continue to operate under the illusion that we can maintain standards without adequate investment. This is why residents are leaving Enfield, and they're moving to surrounding towns like Summers and Suffields. We owe it to our students, our teachers, and our community to advocate for the funding necessary to ensure a thriving educational environment. It means recognizing that education is not just an expense, but an investment in the future of our society. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you, Michelle. Robert Bukowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Let's see here. Tonight, I'd like to focus my comments on the Board of Education budget primarily. I spent a couple of hours yesterday afternoon looking at the 36-page budget on the BOE website, as well as the State of Connecticut Educational Website, referred to as EdSite, as well as the National Center for Educational Statistics website, nces.ed.gov. Unfortunately, the proposed BOE budget is greatly lacking in detail. Many more line items and breakdowns are needed. At the very least, detailed footnotes are needed. It's not a question of overall funding. It's a question of appropriate allocation of limited resources. Please take a moment to look at the above-mentioned websites for yourselves. You'll find much more detail with regards to school staffing than our proposed budget mentions, although Charlotte's presentation was helpful, but I used the one on the BOE website. In my opinion, these are excesses. In my opinion, there are excesses in administrative and support personnel and associated costs. And I want to stress that I am not referring to special ed funding or special ed staffing, and I'm also not referring to reductions in actual teaching positions. It's all there on the websites mentioned. Please take a look. There are needs. There needs to be more detail and justification regarding all of the support and administrative positions. Also, it is quite apparent that we are not putting appropriate attention or funding into math, science, or English. Again, proper allocation versus total amounts. Our SAT scores are below average, and our statewide DPI scores, District Performance Index scores, are far from spectacular, scores of 65 out of 100 at best. Take a look, it's all there. I'm not sure as to what can be done at this late point in time with regards to a more detailed budget. I believe we have a few more weeks before final approval. Perhaps we should ask for a revised budget with greater detail and a greater focus on the above academic performance metrics, including high-level math and AP Science classes. But at the very least, greater detail and more focus with regards to the above-mentioned areas should be required in future years. I'm also in favor of the multi-town approach in an attempt to pressure the state to provide the appropriate level of special ed funding that they have been failing to provide, causing very expensive special ed unfunded mandates. And one more thing, and thank you, George. So I also did some calculations while I was sitting back there, and I believe they're correct. If we have an average house of $250,000, which is assessed at 175, if you take last year's mill rate of 29 and change, whatever, and this year's proposed mill rate of 32, that means there's a $500 tax increase for every homeowner that has a $250,000 house. That seems a little steep, especially in view of the fact that the BOE budget, 8.6%, is very vague at best. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Did Chad leave us?
He left. I think he left.
Okay. Justin Rodzin.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for hosting this hearing tonight, and thank you to Chairwoman Riley. And I wanted to thank Manager Promson as well, for the detailed presentations you guys have made tonight, and of course, in previous weeks. So yes, Justin Rodzin, 71 Kalish Avenue. Thank you for hosting this. I understand that the amount of funding that goes into education in Enfield accounts for a large amount of the overall budget cap. However, this is by no means any of these dollars going to waste, by any stretch. I am sure you are aware that the cost young adults spend for higher education, such as college and graduate studies, is very expensive today. This cost is often tolerated as a necessary step towards making strides forward in a career path. It can feel incredibly expensive in the short term and may not yield immediate results, but such an expense is an investment in one's future. Our public education system, very similarly, is also an investment in the future of our community. Enfield has invested into renovating the educational facilities across the town in recent years, with work at Enfield High School and JFK. A reduction in budget coming up in the future would make maintaining the value that we've recently put into the buildings with these recent upgrades exponentially difficult. This would be exacerbated further if a reduction in workforce within these buildings were added to the equation. While listening closely to the Board of Education and Superintendent Dreszick's presentations in recent weeks, the concern about being underfunded by the state is an area I really hope that the Town Council and the mayor's office takes a keen interest in. If we are indeed being shorted in terms of education funding from the state, I highly encourage town leadership to stand alongside the next superintendent and the Board of Education and make a high priority of sorting out this dilemma from the state level. If it was a problem for two straight years, now going on three years of underfunding, looking at finding a solution for this problem we keep talking about and hearing about makes a lot more sense than trimming education costs within the town as an alternative. As a teacher in the district, I always ask the students, if you've got a problem, present me the problem, but bring me a solution. And I keep hearing about the problem, and I think we need to sort that out at the state level, because if it's three years, it's a long time, guys. In the short term, reducing the budget for schools will have an immediate effect on the quality of the education and opportunities we offer the students of our community. This would also put an extra load on the staff of the buildings at all levels and diminish the opportunities for students to have experiences they deserve. Trimming the education budget may solve a problem, small problem now, but it would open a long-term problem that will affect an entire generation of young learners in our community. If there is any hope of moving out of this group known as the Alliance Districts, budget cuts would destroy any efforts towards this. I understand the stance this Town Council was elected on with the goal of balancing the town's spending. We have to look elsewhere within the town to find areas to trim, if that is going to be the case. We have a lot of great things here in Enfield, which is why I'm a proud resident of this town. I was born here 32 years ago. The only time I left it was for college. I taught elsewhere. I came back to this town because I want to help the community who made me. I'm proud of it. We've got a lot of great things here. Education is not the only thing to look at in terms of the budget. The teachers of this town are not asking for a raise in the pay scale. We are simply requesting to keep what we currently can offer. Inflation and similar factors are what accounts for the 8.6% increase that the Board of Ed has proposed. This does not get teachers any more than we currently have available. Teachers in Connecticut are required to achieve a graduate degree if masters are higher to maintain a teaching position. When you consider the price of teacher salaries, it is cheaper than most positions that require graduate degrees, and still lower than some of the surrounding towns offer in terms of teacher compensation. We need teachers to teach our kids, good teachers to teach our kids. Big class sizes will not help anyone in the long run, especially not the students. So in the long term, we all have a duty to make every effort to uplift our community more than it was when we arrived, whether that was here on the board, moving to this town, on the Board of Education, otherwise. What we do now will heavily impact how they live for years to come. I have a daughter who will be entering the school system in the next few years. The decision you make regarding this budget will affect her education in the years to come. There's a lot of uncertainties with many things, and I'll leave it at that, but I will say, the teachers who have pink slips, the only certainty we have is we have three paychecks left. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Amy Santinella.
Amy Santinella, 23, Longview Road. Coming to you as a resident, a parent, and a teacher here in Enfield. I heard many other people talk about the perks of Enfield High School. My daughter graduated last year with 12 college credits. She is the fourth generation in my family to graduate from Enfield High School. I currently have two younger children in the elementary schools who will hopefully follow in her footsteps and graduate with a quality education from here in Enfield that all Enfield students deserve. I want Enfield to know how vital it is to always hold the education of our children at the utmost of importance. The education system is a major factor in our town's success. Think about the young families moving in. What are they looking at? The schools, our education, what we can provide here. Think about the elderly. What do they hope for? What do they want? They want safety. Safety comes from educated people. And all the residents in between, they want the product of our community and rely on our education system. Cutting from our education budget is not the answer. Look at the towns around us. We are in constant competition with Summers and Suffield, but do they have an integrated preschool? Do they have high schools with a wide variety of class offerings that Enfield High School has? UConn classes, AP classes, classes that my daughter took the last few years of her high school career? Programs set up for real-life experiences, like the culinary program at Enfield High School. We have nationally-ranked athletes. We have students graduating from Enfield High going into Ivy League schools. We have elementary students taking advantage of first-class robotics programming, Lego leagues, representing the country for invention convention. Our middle school programs at JFK are top-notch. Music, arts, did anyone attend the art festival? I can't believe how many talented students we have in this district. Enfield education has a lot to offer, but we must remain competitive and committed to our students in the Enfield community in order for this to continue. So please, not maintaining a realistic and updated budget will ultimately be consequential for the future of Enfield. My personal own children, my stellar students that I have, and many amazing kiddos will be the only ones affected with this budget. To end, I want to mention this. I've been teaching for 18 years. Moving my career back to Enfield in 2017 was my long-term goal. I wanted to give back to my town where I grew up, where I graduated from, and I wanted to give back to my community. 16 of those years have been in middle school. So let me tell you, middle school is not for the faint of heart. The colleagues some here tonight with me that I work alongside with each and every day are the hardest-working people I have ever met in my 18 years of teaching. Please remember these important people and the roles they play for our children and our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christina. Christina? Doughty.
A resident and an alumni of Enfield Public Schools.
Can I just get your name and address for the record, please?
Christina Doughty, 74 Steel Road. All right, we're going to start over. Just making sure you're all awake. I'm Christina Doughty, 74 Steel Road. I'm here today as a parent, a resident, and an alumni of Enfield Public Schools. I'm here to stress the value of education. I'm here to urge you to support and maintain the currently proposed 8.6 education budget. Our children are the future of our town and our country. Nothing should be prioritized more than education, because it secures our future and success as a town. I heard the first... I heard the phrase "gateway to Connecticut" tonight. When people and families decide where to buy property, the quality of schools and funding of education is a top factor. Many people have stressed that tonight. It was part of my decision when I moved to this town, and I don't think that moving to another town that has a better education system is a solution. I think we should do better here. Now more than ever, we need appropriate class sizes which allow our teachers and educators to meet individual students and their needs, support specialists, social workers, behavioral techs, paraprofessionals, and intervention specialists. Regardless of context, special needs is very important. Funding and supporting these roles is crucial to the success of our students and staff members. The less these positions are supported, the more issues we will have with the success of our children regardless of their behavioral or academic needs. Even with the budget as it is, parents and teachers are required to cover the cost of supplies for our classrooms. I don't mind contributing to our educators and their wish lists, but I do mind that they need to take money out of their own pockets to cover basic necessities, such as tissues, glue sticks, crayons, paper towels. In my opinion, if we can fund armed guards, we can fund all of the supplies needed for our classrooms to be stocked adequately. Finally, it is proven that funding for arts, sports, mental health facilities and programs, and other extracurricular programs increases community engagement, satisfaction, and mental health among our youth. I strongly urge you to consider the devastating impact lack of funding will have on our community. Please make the right decision tonight. Please vote to support all of our students and educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Thurlt.
So I'm going to make this brief because there's been a lot of really amazing points. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your presentations and for the care and concern that I can see in your faces that you share, the concern that we, the teachers of Enfield, have for our students and for our staff and our community. I've worked as a primary school teacher for 16 years, the last 12 of which I've been in Enfield, happily calling Enfield Street School my home. I moved here because of the community feel of the school in which I taught at, the people who made every day a bright and shining experience for me and the students whom we shared. I'm here today to urge you to swiftly pass next year's proposed budget in total. Without any solid increases in previous year's budgets and frequent freezes, as you heard before, teachers are relying heavily on donations and our own money to purchase essential items for students. When teachers and support staff leave Enfield Public Schools and their positions are not able to be filled promptly or even at all, the burden of responsibility falls on the remaining staff. I can't imagine what good can come from letting go more than 120 teachers, dedicated members of our staff, our family. Larger class sizes and less support services will only add to the stress and anxiety for us all. Enfield teachers, really all teachers, deserve to be supported, valued, and respected. And if we can work together here, we can make stronger, more positive impacts on our students and within our greater community. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Renaud.
This is an impromptu appearance. I was not planning on coming tonight, but I decided it was really important. To be honest...
Name and address for the record, please.
Emily Renaud, 22 Silver Lane. I decided it was important, even though I've been very discouraged about priorities in the town and some of the town politics lately. It is my sincere hope that all of us, regardless of our political underpinnings, can say that our students and our schools are the most important thing that are happening in this town right now. I am also a product of the Enfield Public School system. I am a lifelong resident. I have my master's degree from Smith College, and I thank the Enfield Public School teachers for allowing me to achieve this. I have a son that graduated from Enfield High School last year, and he's doing very well at his Nantuck. I also have a daughter who's entering Enfield High School this coming year. I'm very concerned for all of the students that are coming into Enfield High School. I know that things are a lot different than when I was there. The needs are much, much higher, and I think, as very many of the previous speakers who are teachers and math teachers at that, it illustrated very well that the increase in the public school funding has been absolutely abysmal and frankly neglectful, and it makes me very, very sad. What I'm hoping will come out of tonight for our entire community and frankly for my own selfish motivation of wanting to feel like we can agree on something, that we can say that these kids and these hard-working teachers deserve us to acknowledge their needs, not nitpick about line items, not delay things by saying, "I'm going to appear more fiscally conservative" by denying the teachers and students what they need. Please, I ask you, take a look at the real kids. Take a look at the real teachers. My daughter loves her teachers, and one of them actually is related to one of you, and it's one of her favorite classes. So I ask you to deeply consider how important it is to fully fund our Enfield Public Schools. If we do not, then we will lose not only teachers, we will lose student achievement, student wellness, and we will lose valuable members of our community. Also, my daughter has a 504, and it's not because she wasn't spanked.
Jennifer Brulett.
Jennifer Briett, 83, Park Ave. According to Superintendent Dreszek, special needs programs and teachers can't be cut. If you don't fully fund the BOE budget, over 100 teachers will be laid off. Class sizes will increase from 20 students to 35. Teachers will be unable to identify, intervene, and perhaps prevent more special needs students. More families will send their children to magnet schools. More funds will leave the town. Less people will move to Enfield, and more will leave. This town cannot afford a 0% increase budget. We've been there, and we've done that. As the town manager has stated, if we had made incremental increases over the years, we wouldn't be where we are today. I'm a graduate of Fermi. I chose to raise my children in Enfield. My children graduated from Fermi, the alternative high school, and Enfield High. I have no grandchildren in the school system, so I would benefit from a tax cut. However, you must fund this budget in its entirety. You can't afford not to.
That completes our list. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and we are in budget deliberations. They're open to the public. It's not a back-and-forth, but you're welcome to sit in and listen to the discussions. We have them on Monday and Wednesday night, so we have one again Wednesday night. Like I said, they're open to the public. They're downstairs in the Skidico Room. We'll take all your comments under advisement, and we do have a tough decision to make. So thank you again for everybody coming out tonight. Have a good night. Okay. Any comments? Anybody? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you so much.